Good evening. I'm going to call the December nine, two thousand and twenty four special meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at seven oh four P M. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. I will call the roll. Dr. Jay Daya, not here at the moment. Sarah Beth Delpere.
Present.
Dr. Lauren Francasi.
Present.
Brooke Hopkins, not here at the moment. Jeff Hughes, not here at the moment. Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Dr. Michael Stramblar.
Present.
Erin Williamson.
Here.
And I'm Lynn Piazek, here. Staff in attendance this evening. Ms. Vonda Tenza, Superintendent. Ms. Donna Koonin, Director of Business and Operations. Ms. Annalise Sherman, Principal. And Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is for the board to get a first look at the Superintendent's proposed budget for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Vonda and Donna will provide a look at the needs of the district and the decisions that were made at an administrative level that led to this proposed budget. I would ask board members to please jot down any specific questions or thoughts that you may have and forward them to Vonda or Donna, and then they will be ready to respond with appropriate information at our regular Board of Education meeting on December sixteen. No action will be taken on the budget this evening. So now I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Two wonderful women.
Thank you. So this document was uploaded fairly recently. It did have one correction that we made by hand. You will see that the correct document will be projected and will be uploaded into Board Book. As Lynn referenced, we did prepare this as a first look, so our board meeting next week will be an opportunity for a lot of robust conversation and really in-depth digging into your questions and additional information. The administration team will be present next week if we need to call on them for questions. I suggested that they, you know, certainly did not need to be here tonight. I try to minimize the nights that they are out. Lisa Sherman is very dedicated, clarified that she lives in town, and really wanted to come to show her support for the budget. So we do appreciate that, but please know that I did ask the administrators to wait until next week to attend. I didn't expect a lot of questions. It doesn't mean that you can't ask questions tonight, but just the fact that we want to be able to prepare, there's probably things that you're going to want to know that we need to dig into, and we want that time to do that. So if you can send us any questions this week, that's great. If you send them to us over the weekend, pretty good. If you send them to us Monday, I cannot promise that they will necessarily be answered by this coming up Monday's meeting, so advance notice would be great. Okay, so we'll begin. This was a joint effort of our administrative team, but it really feeds out into our teachers, sharing what they think they need. They do have a very good grasp on our children and what our learners need, and so their fingerprints are in fact all over this. Um, I think I projected. It doesn't matter. It's okay. So every budget is built on, thank you so much, every budget is built on a strategic plan and mission and vision of the board. The board, one of their responsibilities is to, thank you so much, not only create the mission and vision, but to help enact the plan to fulfill that. So this district is very focused on inspiring leaders. We have very powerful children, and they are definitely getting ready to positively impact our world. Your decisions with our budget helps support that. We did include a few very inspirational leaders drawn by some of our youngest learners as well. We have a Mr. Abraham Lincoln and a Mr. George Washington, so we are aspiring to great leadership. So our budget is also driven heavily by our strategic plan, and as I shared with you at a previous meeting, we are in the middle of enacting our strategic plan. I would expect that this year we are continuing to dig deep into contemporary learners and the academic framework, and that has invested a lot of professional development funds this year and time with some experts coming in and sharing their information with us. Next year, you'll see in the budget, I would expect maybe not as many funds needed to bring in presenters because our teachers need time to do the work. They need time to do the learning. You can't learn, 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 learn without having time to settle and assimilate and process. And so next year, we would expect a lot of that trial, practice, and our third year, the year after that, we would love to see a large celebration, and then I would like to see a recalibration of our strategic plan at that point to see where we are. But our strategic plan does in fact drive our budget decisions. Thank you. We've talked a lot about this. I don't ever want us to lose sight of the portrait of the graduate at Amity because all of our children feed into Amity unless they choose to go to a different school once they leave us at the end of their elementary journey. But the portrait of a graduate for Amity is reflective of our community. We had a lot of people offer input into that, and so our strategic plan not only is purposefully developing strategic problem solvers who can collaborate, but it also, our budget is also informing our decisions on what it is that we are doing to keep education at the center of all we do. Thank you. Thank you. The budget that we're going to look at touches on these points, and I will verbally touch on them, and then we will dig into them shortly, but the budget that we're looking at reflects the following. It does advocate for academic growth through our strategic plan and alignment. It promotes student-centered teaching and learning. Our teachers are very aware of what our children need to learn, and it is not a stand-and-deliver approach. So the materials, the resources, and the professional learning that we are doing is very student-centered. It supports increased student need in the areas of academic growth and social emotional well-being. You will see a few slides in here which talk about some increased needs that we are noticing. The state of Connecticut, and I would imagine broader than the state of Connecticut, are also noticing these needs, but our budget as designed does support the increased needs that we see. It addresses the movement of funding off of the ESER mental health worker grant to the operating budget. I'll talk more about that, but essentially, we had a social worker in a grant, pretty much, I think, the first year that I was here. That is rolling off. We are trying very hard in this budget to keep it. About twenty percent of that person's salary, we are absorbing through another special education grant, but we are trying to put the other eighty percent into this budget. So it's a combination of trying to keep somebody and trying to fund it differently, trying to keep that position. We're addressing the increasing cost of supplies and equipment. Things are definitely escalating in cost. It factors in funds to help maintain our aging building and facility needs. Our board has discussed that, yes, we do have a strategic plan, but we also want to try to build in some funds to try to address some of those pieces in our own budget. So we did try to do that. We tried to help defray the costs of classroom supplies incurred by families. We talked about that and started trying to do that last year with some surplus funds. This year, we tried to build some of that in, not all of it, but we did identify several items that we can buy in bulk and distribute, and it does help our families. So we're very proud to include that, and it does maintain class size levels recommended by the Board of Education. Okay, thank you. So right away, people want to know the bottom line. This is the number that you will see. The bottom line is it is a six point one one percent increase over last year's budget, and I will talk a lot about that because it is a large increase of about a million dollars. We will talk about why that number looks so large compared to last year's, but for now, that is the number that we're looking at. I included this slide because I think when you think about our budget, it's important to understand the hard work that our teachers do to make sure that learning happens anywhere and everywhere. Learning does not have borders, ever, and at Beecher Road School, our learning really extends everywhere. So the budget funds that you invest in our community, some of our returns on investment are incredible. You know, starting at the top, we have children that are learning from each other in the hallways. That's not even in the classroom. Those children are walking around, they're doing a learning walk, looking at other children's informational posters and answering questions. The next page, we have children learning outside. Some of your funds last year supported the increased wireless bandwidth so that we can have some wireless access outside. We have children that learn outside all the time. We have children in the third picture that learn with some of your new resources in small groups on the carpet. It's a very common spot to be. Down here on the bottom, we have children that learn on field trips. So that is a field trip that I went on this spring, and we have learners learning there. Our buses that, you know, drive our children, all of that is supported, some of it through the PTO and some of it through our budget. We learn in the cafeteria. Some of our funds actually went towards revamping our cafeteria, and Principal Sherman was, you know, clever enough and visionary enough to even include some of, Mr. Hughes just joined at seven fourteen. Hi, Mr. Hughes. At some of the.
Online, Mr. Hughes joined online.
Yes.
Mike looking.
Where's the cafeteria? And be kind.
Seven fourteen.
Continue. We learn through assemblies. It was a CARES assembly, which is character, education, and social emotional support. We also learn, even in the superintendent's office, there's a young man showing how on his weekend, he went home to draw a map of Beecher Road School. If you know the school, that's a daunting task. It was incredible. And we learn in the hallways. Those are fifth graders bringing their state parade down the hallways. So learning happens everywhere, and it takes, it takes the budget to move that work forward. The next slide, I'm going to let you read at your leisure. I'm not going to read all of this, but it is wonderful to think about what we've done in the past year or so with our budget funds and some of the things that have come back to us. So on one side, you see where I have identified some amazing things that we've done and where they've come from. So the cafeteria refresh, bringing in our new curriculum revision process, that requires budget funding, some of the new ADA compliant playground equipment that we're going to get, that came through Capital Plan, which the town was kind enough to function, the new line display boards, the interactive boards that are replacing our smart boards, those were put into the budget, increased communication tools, our STEAM teacher that started this year. Those are all pieces that we have received great benefit from, that have come from our budget. And on the other side, you see some of the pieces that make Beecher Road School really special and excellent, and it's not all from your budget, but it is all part of what makes our school amazing when you think about our partnership with the PTA, our academic achievement, the arts that our students are successful in. You know, we have a student council that is, again, strong leadership led by strong teachers. Our after-school programming is second to none. Our summer programming is unique. Our MAG program is unique. The pieces that we think about that make our district special are funded by your budget. Okay, thank you. The drivers never really change. Some of the facets change a little bit, so when you look at something like enrollment, there are districts out there that are saying, this is not us, but they're saying our enrollment's decreasing, but we still need more money, and that could be true. Our enrollment is increasing, we know that, but we also have to look at what does that mean when you operationalize enrollment? It's not just about the numbers. It's about the types of learners that we are receiving. So some of our learners are multi-language learners. We've seen those numbers escalate. You'll see a slide on that. Some of our learners are special education students. They need different resources and specialized instruction. You'll see a slide that talks about that. Some of our learners are just more of them, and so you'll see that crop up at will. So enrollment isn't just about the number that's increasing. Our salaries are increasing. You know, we do had, we had one contract, the CILU contract, that was factored into here at a three point two five increase, but there are also, even within the certified salaries, the certified staff have raises, but they also go over steps. And when Donna Koonin and I were looking, some of our steps up at the top, I think from step fourteen to fifteen is almost a ten thousand dollar raise. So those numbers factor into, you know, that salary increase. Also, minimum wage increased, so when you think to back down to our non-certified staff, we did have to bump up our substitute rates of pay and some of our other non-certified staff in order to make sure that we were meeting the new minimum wage requirements. Transportation and maintenance, again, they don't ever really decrease. The rate of a bus went up seven percent, Donna, was it seven percent? That seems like a large number. We have a great transportation company, a great, unique, again, very unique situation and agreement, but things do cost money. We did have to possibly add a half of a bus for special education. We'll talk about that. That does have a cost. Our service contracts for like our roof and our HVAC, all of these things are tipping up. The insurance, we don't know. We work with the town. We have the same insurance as the town. If we're trending, great. We need our town to trend healthy as well. We did factor in, I believe, a nine percent, nine and a half, nine. We hope that that will go lower. We expect it would go lower based on our trending data. We need everybody to stay healthy, and we really won't know that number until closer to the spring. Thank you. The next one is just the enrollment trend. We use the Prouder report. I have reached out to get a few other reports as well to see how they compare, and it's been pretty accurate. It really has, and I'll show you on the next, I think it's the next slide or a slide after how accurate it is, but so you can see us right now. It says eight seventy-ish, that's about where we are, and I think we're at eight sixty-seven, and it says eight seventy. These are October first numbers, and it's projecting us to drop a little bit next year. Maybe we will, and then it shows us, you know, trajectory building up again. So that does help us when we work on our assumptions for class sizes. The next slide, just to give you an example of the Prouder projections, we went back and looked today, and they projected that we would have ninety kindergarteners this year. We have ninety-two. They are projecting that we'll have a hundred six next year, and I had ballparked a hundred eight. So if it holds true, we don't know what we're going to see for kindergarten enrollment, but they do project that it will be more than this year, and we did have some nice room in our class sizes. They were small this year, so that does give us some room. So we are not anticipating any change in staff for next year. We did add a kindergarten teacher partway through this year. She is reflected in this chart. We waited until we could get, you know, Marcia's data to get her in there, so there are seven full sections when you include MAG in first grade. We will keep that teacher and roll her to another grade level, so you can see the projected class sizes for next year there. The next slide talks a little bit about special education, and again, Mrs. Portrading will be here next week for additional information and questions, but it does show in the top part, our student population, then it breaks it down to students with disabilities and the special education prevalence. We're hovering right around fourteen percent. That's a little under where the state is at. A lot of districts around us are around the same point. It's a high percentage.
We're under the state?
Yeah, slightly under.
Yep.
And the second slide I bring because this is part of the reason why we are trying to keep that social worker. We are fully staffed. We have our part-time psychologist. We're thrilled, but the social worker is providing, as well as the rest of our support staff, we have other children that aren't special education that have needs, and this slide, if you could just go back for one second, please, thank you so much. This slide shows you that our students with disability are receiving direct services from our occupational therapist, our mental health and social emotional support staff in speech and language. We also have general ed students and students receiving intervention and five oh four students that also receive support from these staff members. So those numbers are large and glowing, growing, and our, you know, our SEL lessons, they're happening for all pre-K and K classes and other grade levels as requested, and we have even had upper grade levels ask for classroom lessons to occur, which I think is great. Thank you. I referenced before that our, you know, our multi-language learner population is growing. It helps increase the diversity of our school. As a language diverse school, we are up to approximately sixty students of various languages. Those are most of the languages on the side. I'm going to tell you, they're probably not all of the languages. You can see that trajectory has really picked up since two thousand and twenty-one, really after COVID. So I had shared with the board, and I'll just continue to remind you, we aren't at that point yet. We have about fourteen of a few different languages, fourteen and maybe eleven, and once you hit twenty, the state of Connecticut says if you hit twenty students in one building of one language spoken by October first, you need to put in your budget for the following year, a bilingual teacher. If you can't find a bilingual teacher, you have to put into your budget that amount of money for a staff member, and you could write to the state of Connecticut and ask for another T-Sol teacher. Bilingual teachers are very hard to find. T-Sol teachers are very hard to find, but I do think that next October, we could be sitting here realizing that we need to add another position in our budget for the following year. Even if we tipped over this year, we wouldn't be obligated next year. We'd be looking really hard to try to support them, but we wouldn't be obligated by the state because it didn't happen by October first. But I do think we need to be aware. In the meantime, I did write the Title III grant for a portion of it to give us about twenty hours a week of tutoring support. That was just finally cleared by the state on December second, so we can start that process of trying to write a job description to get a little, you know, a couple hours a day, a person who's able to come in and help provide our students some tutoring. I know I'm pretty excited about that when it finally came through, was approved. So that's exciting. Thank you. Okay, so in terms of what is different, because that number is big, and we kept staring at it and staring at it and wondering, it's big, it's a big number. Why is it so big? There's nothing really new in here, but what we have to remember, and it's all appropriate, but it is bigger because we added four paraeducators and a teacher from that last number. So it is bigger, but it's not bigger because of really anything else we added. So we're maintaining that additional teaching section. We are going to try very hard to maintain that one point five social workers. When the grant funds expired, we're going to try to fund it through our budget and the IDEA grant. We did add two-tenths to a current part-time speech and language practitioner to increase that need that I showed you on a previous slide. Non-certified, we're not looking to add really anything else. We're looking to maintain our paras that we added. We don't really have a large pocket of sixth graders rolling off with paraeducators, so we do need to maintain the four that we've added, and we are looking to maintain the added a few additional hours in our last budget to the north office, and that has been very helpful, so we are not looking to change that. Okay, I'm going to let Donna talk for a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is certainly a teeny tiny slide, but you can see our budget staffing in the twenty-five, twenty-six column on the right. We're not increasing over our current staff, which is the second to the last column, but the, we, those five positions we added, they're not in last year's or this year's budget, so it will appear as a big part of our increase. In fact, one point six percent of our six point one increase is specifically those five positions and their, you know, payroll taxes and benefits and things. So anyway, so, you know, at your leisure or whatever, you can look through this. These are, you know, we're just maintaining the administration, the teachers, the paras, para-professionals, and our other operating staff to maintain one hundred and forty-nine Our pie chart looks similar to previous years. Salaries and benefits around eighty-one percent. Maybe the transportation slice is getting a little bigger, and maybe the tuition, outplace tuition slice is getting a little bigger, but it's pretty similar. The next slide, this kind of shows the various categories that you're used to hearing about every month when we do our monthly board reports. Salaries, benefits, professional services, property, just shows us how we compare to last year in each one of those categories. And if you look on the right, salaries and benefits together are eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars more than they were in the previous year, and that makes up eighty-one percent of our million-dollar growth in our budget. Transportation, which is in the other purchase services category, is a hundred and, almost a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars more than our transportation in the current year, and that's about eleven percent of that million-dollar growth in our budget ask. The tuition, which is also in that same line, that's almost eighty-five thousand dollars more than we plan to use for tuition in the current year, and again, that's about eight percent of that million-dollar growth in our budget. And all, you know, if you add eighty-one, eleven, and eight, that's a hundred percent. That's that million dollars right there. All the other categories, you know, little over, little under, they're all pretty neutral. And so that's where it all is, right there in those kind of three items. Next slide. So yeah, I think Vonda indicated this, you know, in this current draft of this budget, I've estimated a nine percent increase in our insurance premiums for next year, you know, based on the claims, the data that we're showing. We probably should do a little better than that, but we're hooked in with the town, and I think it's better at this, and they won't make their decision until both this month and next month's data rolls through, and they see, and then they look at our claims and say, how healthy are these people, and what percentage of an increase will we give them on their premiums? So we will know a little better in maybe two more months as to what they're going to ask of us in terms of insurance renewal. Transportation, just, you know, each bus is seventy thousand dollars a year. That's an increase of about seven percent, and then in addition to the number of buses themselves. And then in addition to the number of buses themselves, you know, are 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 the students that come to Beach Road School, we believe we're going to be able to have the same amount of buses, even though they're going to be more expensive. But we do believe we will need additional outplace transportation services. And so that is going to go up 20%, 28% over the current amount that we spend on outplace transportation services. And when you have more buses, you need more fuel. And so that's another component of of our transportation cost as a whole that, you know, we used to buy 17,000 gallons a year. It looks like we're buying 22,000 gallons of fuel a year now. So we're bidding that out right now as we speak in the month of December with the BOA districts. But but I put what I think, you know, just based on the current price of diesel in the budget. In special education, we are using some additional OTPT-type services, an additional day a week. And that is being provided by a contract. So we did have a staff member retire who was just a one-day-a-week person. So there was a reduction in salary for that and an increase in in the line 390 for special education. And then we also talked before about our outplace tuition that we have. Our estimates are that it will be quite a bit, you know, $85,000 more than it is this year based on what we think our outplacements will be. Utilities, Vonda doesn't think utilities are very interesting, so she'll let me keep talking. I do not estimate any change in our water. We're not filling the pool. Last year, we had to fill the pool twice and to find out it was leaking. So we went a tiny bit over budget with water last year, but we I don't anticipate that this year. Our electricity rates are locked through FY '27. We continue to save money while the pool is not operating. We are now paying something called a combined public benefit charge that I think helps people who can't pay their bill. And so that's maybe a little increase, eight to $10,000 over last year. But if you'll recall, when we did the budget last year, we didn't know the fate of the pool at that point in time. So I am going, we are going to be able to to estimate less for utilities. That's one area where we are saving a little bit or proposing that we'll be saving a little bit over the previous year in that area of the budget. And same thing with with natural gas. We're locked right now for another 30 months. And I am, the number that we've included in this budget is just what we've averaged based on our use and talking to Titan Energy, who is a consultant for us in the energy market. Here's kind of our utilities as a trend. You know, some things to note, those like FY '23 is low. You know, we had a very favorable rate on electric and gas, which we're not quite as good now, but we're also using a lot less with the non-operation of the pool. That, you know, that saves us $45,000 a year, maybe between electricity and and heating. And so this year, again, we didn't know, so we budgeted a little bit higher. But next year, even though our rates aren't quite as good, I think we'll come down again. As long as that pool's not running, it helps it helps us. But you can see that the the water always has kind of stayed the same. But we're we're definitely noticing some savings in natural gas and electricity.
So regarding technology, last year, we did try Chromebooks in sixth grade. We felt it was very successful. It helped for a nice smooth transition to AMITI. We are still an Apple distinguished school and very proud of the way that we utilize our Apple products. It's not all about what you have. It's really how you use it and use them to help express what you're learning. That is not going away. But at the same time, rather than equip every fifth-grade student with access to a new iPad, we are going to adopt Chromebooks in fifth grade as well. And that does actually save us a chunk of money. That's not why we did it, but it is nice that it does save us money. They still, the fifth graders and sixth graders still will have access to sets of iPads for all of the various videography and pieces of creativity that we really like to see. The new line interactive touchboards, this is our final outfit for the classrooms. We will still have some spaces that we'd like to outfit the following year. But at this point, these have replaced our smart boards, and these would finish out all of the grade levels. If you remember, we started in third and fourth and kind of expanded out. So these are the last classroom instructional settings. So we're excited about that. They do require document cameras, and so that that is a piece that we added in. And our littlest learners are having a hard time reaching where they are installed. So we need these adjustable height mounts so that we can bring them down for those like myself that cannot reach and use the whole space on the board.
This slide just kind of, again, just shows where the increase is coming from. The baseline budget, our current year budget is $17,615,025. Contracted salaries and benefits, the 742 and the 132. If you add those together, that's the 870, $825,000 we mentioned in a previous slide or 81% of our increase. The special education tuition and transportation is $156,000 of our increase. The, what we just spoke about, the choice of the administration and the teachers, fifth-grade teachers to go to Chromebooks, that's going to be a little savings in our technology and equipment budget compared to previous year. Just regular transportation, same amount of buses, just adding the increased price of a bus next year is an additional $44,000. Our supplies line, with adding the pre-buying some of the supplies to help the families, we've increased the ask for supplies in both STEAM and math. STEAM, you know, they're just trying to build a program and and, you know, get some resources. So that's something a little extra. Other than that, we pretty much, you know, a classroom teacher has about $700 to, you know, purchase supplies for their classroom. You know, doing a little bit better on utility internet. Our insurance, we've estimated about a seven and a half percent increase over the prior year based on talking to our insurance broker, not health insurance. This is our liability and workers' comp type insurance. Repairs and maintenance, as the building continues to age, we feel it's important to keep adding a little bit there so that we can address things as they absolutely will arise. The superintendent's review and reductions, we found, you know, a piece of software that was in two places and just trimmed a few little things there. But, you know, the the net of all those items is our million-dollar increase. And that brings us to a request for the FY '26 year, a recommendation of $18,691,855 or a 6.1% increase. And again, it's really salaries and benefits, transportation and tuition. Those are the the three things that are really driving that. The grants, you've probably heard even in the national news that, you know, some of the grants are are shrinking, are we're getting a little bit less in Title I. We got $30,000 this year. We'll only be getting just under $24,000 next year. The biggest decrease is our mental health worker grant. And so, you know, all said and done, we're, we can expect about $86,000 less in grants next year than we will be receiving this year. And so, you know, in order to maintain some of those things, those those costs are ending up in the in the general fund, and that's that's why you see the salaries and benefits growing. The next slide. We took your direction after our last meeting, and we smoothed out the ask in our capital requests over the next several years to be smoother and, you know, more level.
And then that just brings us to the last few pages. This one is the one that we will eventually alter based on your input into the budget, which we will start addressing, you know, immediately. And then we will end up with an approved budget increase in percent that we will submit to the town. So that's that's our process. The last piece is just the visual reference of our increases over the past several years. And again, I know that it looks large, but you've got to remember, in between that 3.5 and that 6.1 are already staff members that
Right.
that are already in there.
If we weren't required to add five staff members this year, it would be like four and a half, you know. But, you know, we have to do
And we do, and that's that's okay.
Legally required to add those staff members and or follow our board policy for staff classroom sizes, so.
The last page just reminds us of our dates. So we do have our budget next week as the topic of discussion. And we have additional meetings in January, should we need them for additional discussion and question and answer. We do need to have it adopted by January 7th for the town. We don't have specific dates as to when we present to the Board of Finance, but it will be at the end of January. On our last slide, this is right out of the words of a kindergartner, "Keep the great work going." You have to be an excellent reader. Keep the great work going. Right off our wall. And that's actually excellent work for a kindergartner to have that piece of writing.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. So at this point, again, you know, we would like to say that if there's any broad initial questions, we can certainly address them. But as you take the time to digest this and think and ask or talk to other people, let us know. Bring your questions, you can certainly bring them. But if they're if they're anything that would require research on our part, we would love to know that in advance. The purpose of this meeting was so that we wouldn't get to a board meeting and have you feel any ultimate pressure to make a decision that night or or anything. This is just
It's a lot to take in.
As I'm learning with my son getting married in July, I call it a first look. And I was talking with Lisa Sherman about it. Like, I am not all about the first look for the wedding, but this is a first look at the budget.
A little less romantic.
Yeah. Any questions from board members?
Anyone have any questions?
If I remember right, the HMH materials and professional development is all covered by funds we get from the state, right?
That was a one-time purchase, a one-time grant, yes.
Yeah, okay, so there's no other costs associated with that this next year that we need?
No, most of those pieces were a six-year, I believe, a six-year subscription to online. There might be some consumable pieces that eventually we will need to supplement, yeah.
Question? For enrollment, the enroll, projected enrollment numbers, was that done, I'm assuming, before the legislative change of the?
Right around the same time. And he did just email us a little update on his numbers, and that's when his updated number matched mine by two as well for next year. Yep, he just emailed us.
Okay, so it's not like we should anticipate there's, it doesn't account for the change in legislation?
It counts best he can. He says basically what we're all saying, which is it is kind of a shot in the dark. You know, the the further out we get years-wise, the more accurate it will be because that percentage of variation will decrease.
Right. And and this is kind of related, when he gave the projection, was there any reason why the year after we anticipated going up by like 75 kids?
No. I think I think he tweaked all of that, though. I'd have to go back and look at it. I just got it. I can look at that, though, that's something I can look at.
Questions? Steven, anything?
Hmm, enough. I think you did an excellent job. And certainly the question I anticipate is, if we had had those five positions in the original budget for this year, what would the difference have been if it had been up four and a half percent? Which is much more aligned. So, you know, my one suggestion on the chart on page five will be to actually distinguish between what it would have been if those positions are included and then the balance.
Yeah, I was gonna
Because just visually, it makes it very clear.
Yeah, like a stacked bar.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, says
Yep.
if we had budgeted for those needs.
Yep.
Although we
Great suggestion.
We couldn't have known, yeah.
All right, great. Anything? Lauren, anything?
No, I was just wondering a little bit about the health insurance numbers, but Vonda answered that. I think we wait a couple months of
Yeah, you always have to wait for the health insurance.
So that, I think that's a significant factor that could
And we put the same number in that the town did, correct?
They don't have to do theirs yet. But I mean, I talked to Blueprint Financial and Tony, too.
Yep, yeah.
By the time they do theirs, though, they might know better.
We currently have three kids out of district, right?
I think so. I can't really, it's it's under five.
I just noticed in '24, '25, there's two. And in '20, next year, there's an additional one. And so I'm wondering, is that because we had an extra one added this year or we anticipate?
Yes.
We had an extra one added this year, right?
It's more of an anticipation
Anticipation, okay.
that will happen this year.
Got it.
Anything else, Mike? Mr. Hughes? Oh, yes, Mr. Hughes. Sorry.
Well, thank you for playing this in front of us in advance. Very helpful players, so thank you.
Perfect. So just remind you all to, you have some homework to do in the next, the rest of this week to look this over, think about any questions or additional information that you're looking for. Shoot off an email to Donna or Vonda or pick up the phone and give them a call.
Yeah, and the the actual budget book was also uploaded.
Okay, yes, and we got that in our packets. You'll see, you know, the breakdown of everything. And so if you could get that to them, you know, as soon as possible so they have some some lead time to do whatever digging or research that they need to do so that next Monday at our regular Board of Ed meeting, they can answer our questions. That would be very helpful, so.
And it's still okay if other questions prop up while we're talking. It's just if you have anything that needs a lot of research.
And as noted by Vonda, we have those two dates in January to take action if necessary, both the 6th, and hopefully we won't need the 7th. But if it, it gives us a snow date in there as well, so we'll be good to go. Ms. Sherman, I thank you for being here.
Thank you.
This evening. And if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Lawrence? Ms. Dr. Strampler? Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Mike Strampler to adjourn at 7:50 PM. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Mr. Hughes is raising his hand online. Thank you. And I appreciate everyone for being here tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you.